Okay, we'd like to bring our meeting to order. We appreciate your in attendance, your attendance here this evening. We appreciate all of you being here. We'll begin our meeting with a invocation by Councilmember Millsap and a pledge by Councilmember Jensen.
Our Father in Heaven, we are very grateful to be members of this great city. We're grateful for the beautiful landscape that we find ourselves in and the lovely spring that we've had and all of the rain we've received recently, especially living here in this desert. And we're grateful for the people who came before us here in Springville and the choices they made to help make it so great. We're very grateful for the parents and mentors who help guide the youth of our city and help them to achieve their fullest potential. Please bless our actions here tonight, and this we pray, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
If we could stand and repeat the pledge allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay, I need a motion for approval of the meeting's agenda as printed.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting's agenda as written.
I will second that.
Okay, um, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. We'd like to recognize students or scouts who are here. We always have a great experience with them. So if they're here, just visiting or doing some schoolwork, you want to raise your hand so we know. He's looking back. Are you here for schoolwork? No, okay. You're just here to support. Okay, that's great. Well, I would welcome you up here on the rostrum. We enjoy having the schoolkids come up. Uh, the drawers are full of candy, and so that usually brings them up very quickly, but anyway. Uh, our first ceremonial will be, uh, is Emily, are you going to do the presenting? Oh, okay, Gina, very good.
So we are so grateful to be here for the art royalty and I even have, because Candace prepared it, a slideshow with pictures. And we're, as I tell you about the art royalty and what they've done this year, I first want to invite them to stand up with us. So we're gonna have, um, this, yeah, Ashley Fitzgerald come up, Magdalena Marquez, Marissa Betts, Mailey Cooper, Mailey Romney, and Nicole Gonzalez. And these are our museum art royalty for the past year, and they're awesome. And, um, I will go through this now. So art royalty has been a tradition at the museum for over a hundred years. It started, art royalty and the Art Queen started even before the Spring Salon. So it's been a tradition in, um, Springville for a long time. And in its early days, the Art Queen and art royalty would raise funds through a penny vote for the, to purchase artworks for the museum's collection. And many of these artworks are on display right now in our Salon 100 retrospective. And since the high school and the museum haven't been as connected since the eighties, it's been a volunteer program. And we host, it's an honor to host a program that maintains its legacy of devotion to the arts and continues to evolve as the community and museum progresses through time. And, and like I said, it's a, it's a major volunteer program at the museum. And these, um, young women serve as ambassadors to the museum. In the last year, they have worked over four hundred hours, given four hundred hours of volunteer service to Springville. They've helped facilitate the Children's Art Festival, host the Children's Tea, assist with museum and community events, planned the fifty-third, um, annual high school art show's opening reception, and selected artworks for the current iteration of the penny vote. They also worked with our exhibition team this year and wrote a book, Colors in Art, that will be on display in our new exhibition color downstairs in the underground and will be enjoyed by visitors for years to come. So we would love to give a big round of applause to these women for all the work that they do at museums. And, um, Mayor and Gina, will you help me pass out these certificates? There's handy name tags on the back. So we, and maybe let's turn this way with the mayor so your, um, parents can see, take a picture too. But I'll talk this, I'll talk sideways. I have still, even doing a lot of these ceremonials, I have not gotten down the, the right way to stand and do it. Um, but to Ashley Fitzgerald, Magdalena Marquez, Marissa Betts, Mailey Cooper, Mailey Romney, and Nicole Gonzalez. Thank you, everyone, and also all standing in picture. Gina, you should be in a picture too. And Candace, third by her, really, I thought it's happened, said she kept me in picture. Uh, I work with tons of youth each year, and this group of art royalty really was special. And Candace wanted to say that too, that she was so proud of working with you and that you guys were really exemplary. So thank you so much. And they're all graduating soon, so we'll be graduating soon too. Awesome, congratulations.
Wow, that's great.
Thank you.
Well, the art museum and artwork is a very big part of our city. We appreciate you representing that. It's very nice of you. And, uh, you look awful young to be graduating, so anyway, congratulations to you. Very good. Um, anyone who'd like to make a public comment is welcome to do so. There's a form that's out in the, uh, foyer. And if you'd get it over to Kim, you're welcome to do that. We have one tonight. Brent Money, who'd like to talk about annexation of the Money property. So Brent, if you'd like to come up and take three or four minutes.
Mayor and City Council, good evening. I, I appreciate, uh, your allowing me to take just a few moments of your council, uh, time to share a little bit about, about myself and what's going on. My name is Brent Money. Uh, I am a fifth generation South Utah County farmer and rancher, and I reside in Palmar, Utah. I've been there all my life, and I, I am the owner of a piece of property that is between the boundaries of Anixed Spanish Fork to the west and south, and Springville City to the east. I am still in, the piece of property is still in unincorporated Utah County. So if you take the fourth south exit and go west, about a mile and a half or two miles, that is where my property is on the north side of the road. Okay? Uh, and I don't think all of you are aware, but some of you are aware, uh, that I would like to be annexed into Spanish Fork City. And I would like to share with you a few of the reasons why. Some time ago, GWC purchased a large plot of land that borders my property to the west. G, GWC then proceeded to annex it into Spanish Fork City. There were likely multiple reasons why Sp- why Springville City did not protest that annexation. However, it is my opinion that a major factor in the decision was the feasibility study that GWC did, performed, that showed the enormous cost to bring the utilities to the property. Once annexed into Spanish Fork City, GWC has proceeded with their development of that property. And all the utilities and the infrastructure are now at my property line. I have been content, ranching, much as my family has been doing on this property for over a hundred years. Uh, the development in this area, however, is moving very fast, both to the west and to the south. And sometime in the near future, there will be four million square feet of warehouses and other buildings on the property to my west. As this situation has unfolded over the past several months, it has been, it has become clear to me that what my property has historically been used for over multiple generations could possibly be coming to an end. And sadly, not by my choice. While it is true, I am not a land developer, a realtor, or a city planner. My knowledge on these matters may somewhat, are somewhat limited. I do, however, have common sense, and I recognize that there is great value in having the utilities readily available at the boundaries of my property now. I would not have had a problem being annexed into Springville City limits if Springville City would have kept the north side of the road within their annexation plans. Unfortunately, with GWC's property being granted annexation into Spanish Fork, I believe that the north annexation plan has changed. At the pace of the development in the area, I have become increasingly uncomfortable in potentially waiting five, ten, or fifteen years for Springville to develop with the utilities and the infrastructure to my, my east boundary. I further understand that my property, being annexed into Springville, will not make or break Springville City. My property being annexed into Spanish Fork will not make or break Spanish Fork City. I do, however, believe that not allowing my property to be annexed the way that I choose will have a significant impact on my business and my family. For these reasons, and out of courtesy to you and respect to you, I am letting you know that I will be applying for annexation into Spanish Fork City. Again, as a multi-generational owner, this property has been in the Money family for over a hundred years. My father, Eldon Money, my grandfather, William J. Money, and my great-grandfather, A.T. Money, all worked to increase the value of the family farm. And because of their stewardship and mine, it is still a viable operation today. I hope that you will support me in doing what I believe is best for me and my family. At this time, and for the reasons I have mentioned, I believe a Spanish Fork City annexation can best serve my family's needs and add the most value to my piece of property. I would hope that you would understand and respect my desires in this matter. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Money. We appreciate you coming and sharing your thoughts with us. And, uh, his father, Eldon Money, was a state senator, if I remember right, and represented our area many, many, many years ago. So we appreciate the family, very good family. Thank you very much. Okay, um, Lily, I mean Libby, excuse me. If you'd like to come up and do your presentation, we would be honored if you would mind doing that. Thank you. Yes. Oh, okay. Hold on just one second. We have another one. Very good. Bradley Peterson. You're welcome to come up.
I understand Craig Lowe came in and discussed the, the water problem on Spring Oaks Drive, broken water main in the middle of the street. There were five consecutive breaks. I came to a city council meeting with, equipped with all the pictures, all of the details. It was all written up. I shared that. Craig called me when, I guess he left this meeting after discussing with the city council. And, uh, he just said, if you wanted to put in a word, he said that they're meeting, what, on the fourteenth or something? And also this evening. And he, he looked at his phone and he says, they're meeting at seven o'clock now if you want to go. So I didn't even change clothes. But, uh, what's, what was, I found interesting is that there was a Staples was the fellow's name. He's a Public Works Director, Stapley.
Brad Stapley.
Brad Stapley. And I'm, I'm Brad, so I should have remembered that. But, I mean, we came home from church and there was a gush of water coming down the, the, uh, the curb and gutter that exceeded the curb and gutter. It was up on the sidewalk. I took pictures of the dirt it washed out and all the rest. And ultimately, the city told me there had been earth movement. You know, and it's like, I've got a sinkhole. My wife took pictures of me with just my head above ground between me and the low property. I had gone out to, just to explore what was wrong. I had a, a garage with a pontoon boat under it, and there was a sinkhole eight feet wide and eight feet deep right in front of that boat. And it's like, somebody told me, well, I'm sure you can figure out a way to fill that hole. That was the satisfaction I got. And then to, to declare that, and then I called the, uh, state geological engineer. And he came and he says, there was no ground movement. There are certain indications that would demonstrate that it was ground movement. He said, you had a water problem, and that water main broke five times. I went out, talked to the people that were working on it, digging, you know, with the heavy equipment and all the rest. And they said, well, we'd rather not discuss it with you. We do a lot of work for Springville City, and we don't want to cut our own throat. So, I mean, I ran into one obstacle after another, and I was glad Craig had come down and discussed it because his home was up for sale with a commercial real estate company for eight hundred thousand dollars, I remember. And, uh, I called Davenport, you know, they work on concrete and lift foundations and lift driveways and all that. And their bid was over five hundred thousand dollars. And I, it's like, when I was here, I, I came with that bid. And I said, I'm not made of money. I, you know, and I mean, I, I think Craig told me, well, with the city truck, uh, the brake wasn't on and run into a house, who would be responsible for the damage? You know, that was common sense. So anyway, I, I felt like I went to the trouble of taking all the pictures and making a file. And after Craig called me, I, I was digging in drawers and looking for the file that I had in a closet, and it's not there. I think my wife relocated it. She's good at that. But, uh, here I am. I, I just felt like, you know, it's like Craig said, you know, if, if you don't get any satisfaction, you, you get, you let it be known so that it's in the news. And that, that was his closing remark. So, I mean, he, I could see his frustration because his house is uninhabitable. It was his mother's home. And I don't know how many siblings there are, but I think he kind of was the spokesman for, you know, his, his family. And, uh, so here we are. I appreciate your
Thank you.
time and allowing me to come late and, and talk to you.
Yes, and I would encourage you also to get with Chris Wilson, who has the surveys.
Mayor?
This engineer who has the information that was presented tonight.
All right.
And then you'll be able to see what we saw. Would that be okay?
That, I'll do that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Libby, you are now on officially, so sorry about that.
I'm trying to sign in here. I think I'm missing the app symbol. Oops. Perfect. Awesome. So again, this is just my quick project about, uh, the importance of victim advocacy. And again, the way Chris and I decided to go about this is a day in the life of our victim advocate. So again, I kind of gave you like the rundown in the last meeting of kind of like the bulk of the information. But this is more of like the fluff or more, more in-depth of what I had to, uh, share with you guys. I'll obviously still send this to you guys. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out. Anyways. So here's the meet me slide. Again, made a mention of this in our last meeting. Again, my name's just Libby. I go to Salem House High School. I've been your legal intern for this past semester. It's been a great opportunity. Um, again, my victim advocacy interest was piqued when I saw a guest speaker at an event I went to who was a victim advocate. And then that kind of led me into picking this subject as my final, uh, project. So again, this is kind of the overview I was talking about in our last meeting, uh, the what we'll look at and how it's broken down. So as you can see, we will go over an introduction of what victim advocacy is, kind of like the bullet points of like an overview of what it is, what a victim advocate does. And then we'll introduce our victim advocate, uh, her background, what she does. And then we'll move into the day-to-day, kind of, you know, rundown of what she does and what challenges she faces. And then the impacts of what she does, sharing a story and why the advocacy matters. And finally, conclusion, overview, call to action, so on and so forth. So when it comes to the role of a victim advocate, essentially what they're there to do is support victims. So when it comes to, you know, having a stable community, it's important to recognize that, you know, building people up at their lowest points is what, uh, we should strive to do as, um, either city council or just as community members. When these victims reach out to our victim advocate, they are at one of the most emotionally distressful times of their life. Um, they're at their lowest low, and they need somebody who's going to guide them through, you know, that complex legal process that, um, is not very easy to con- to, um, navigate on your own. And so that's why we have people like Colleen. So it's kind of, it's kind of an interesting slide to present with not much information because you can say, oh, their job is to help victims. But the depth of that is so much deeper than just what you can put into words. Uh, Colleen described her job as like multifaceted. She was saying, oh, sometimes I do this, sometimes I do this. Yeah, sometimes I show up to the crime scene. I answer emails, all these different things. There's so many things that victim advocates do, but the main thing is they help victims. A quote that Colleen shared with me that I'd like to kind of, you know, put in this, put in this segment of my presentation is that, quote, "Victims of crimes have just experienced an awful emotionally charged thing. They should have some assistance to guide them towards the resources available." So as a city or kind of as just a community in general, we offer a number of different resources. And it's Colleen's job or victim advocate's jobs to point them in that right direction. So this is Colleen. She's also back there. Um, and this is kind of like a brief introduction on what she does. She has a bachelor's degree in science from BYU, which is pretty awesome. She has her SUDC, which, um, licensing, which I believe is just licensing to work with, uh, drugs, illicit drugs and stuff like that. Uh, I believe that's from UVU, and she got that in two thousand. Uh, she's been working here at Springville since two thousand and three, which is longer than I've been alive. So she's a real OG here in Springville. And it's kind of interesting. This made me laugh. Her journey is that she actually didn't know about victim advocacy until she saw it on, um, like applying for the job. And she was like, oh, wow, my qualifications match, and so I'll apply. And then she had her interview, and a couple of months later, she was employed. So I think that's pretty cool. I've always been a strong believer in everything happens for a reason. So we're happy she's here. So kind of the day in the life of her activities. Um, every time I'd like bring up this subject or when I emailed her, asking her for like, like her bullet point responses, she always says, oh, my day starts with checking emails. She goes through her emails, uh, she does referrals, and she contacts these victims. She's talking to them. She's on the phone with them. She's on, uh, she's on site with them, so on and so forth. Again, victims are the priority in her career. Um, she also documents cases. She tracks victim progress. Um, and she offers guidance throughout that progress and kind of, you know, if they need more, if they need less, it's just kind of up to her digression. And, you know, her being experienced in this field is something that's incredibly valuable to that. Uh, she also attends hearings when it comes to, um, like protective order stalking cases, um, injunctions, so on and so forth. It's her job to be there and to be present. Uh, she supports not only, uh, the victims, but also the law enforcement and the prosecutors, whether again, it's on the scene or it's in a courtroom. Um, she also manages her own grant. She records that. Uh, she's, she to- told me a little bit about her system and how she does that. And it's pretty, it's pretty productive what she does, kind of how she records it throughout the year. So that's what she can present to you. Because again, she has her biannual reports where she comes in. And she shows you guys all these statistics, and she'll, she, uh, does her filing of her reports, and she shows what she's spending her money on. And that's kind of what you guys see, but you guys don't see what she does like behind the scenes. Um, and she also just organizes with, um, different advocacy networks, whether it's, you know, Mapleton or on a county level. That's kind of like a day in her life. Again, she didn't give me like, this is what I do, this is what I do, this is what I do, because she's all over the place. And it was, it was actually shocking when I found out that Colleen's actually part-time. So she's doing a lot of work, a lot of great work in such a little amount of time. So that's definitely something that needs to be recognized. So when it comes to challenges, again, uh, she didn't necessarily give me any laid-out challenges, uh, to share with you guys because she says Springville treats her well. Um, so just like on a general level, a victim advocate might face, you know, emotional strain, uh, legal system issues, uh, engagement problems and workload. So when it comes to this emotional strain, again, they're working with people at the lowest low. Like they're working with people who have just experienced something incredibly distressful and incredibly hard on them, their families, their like mental health, so on and so forth. So it's important to recognize that the victim is the one who's absor- or the, the victim advocate is the one who's absorbing kind of that trauma. And they're the ones who works, who works them through that. And that kind of ties into workload and the issues that come with that of just kind of being one person, being everywhere, kind of working with everyone, um, at the same time. And then, again, it's her job to not only support these victims, but also law enforcement and, uh, the prosecuting team when she needs to be here and when she needs to, uh, support the victim throughout like the actual court process. Um, Colleen shared another quote that I'd like to throw in here. It's that, "It's heartbreaking to see what people go through. I don't meet the victims at their best moments, but seeing them heal and recover keeps me going." So when she's faced with all these challenges, it's like the outcome that kind of keeps her going and like keeps her striving through and doing the great work that she does. Um, this is a story that I won't read just because of time. Um, but I asked Colleen to share a story where she felt that she truly made a difference. Um, there was a strangulation case, um, and the victim actually stayed incredibly engaged, um, throughout the whole, uh, process. She was left for dead, but escaped. She was able to contact the police, um, in an act of luck, and she was able to seek justice. And, um, her boyfriend, who was the one who tried to strangle her, was actually prosecuted. And she said, it was incredibly inspiring to see her work through that process and for Colleen to be a part of that process, uh, to see her kind of stand up to him and actually see him be prosecuted, you know, live to see another day and live to see justice. Um, so with that, this kind of gave me a little bit of insight on how long this process can take. Like this can be months, this can be years, and she's there for all of it. She knows these people. She knows what they've been through, and she kind of grows with them. So I thought that that, that story is something that's worth sharing. Uh, this kind of leads me to the conclusion chunk of, um, my presentation of why advocacy matters. Um, I definitely think it's like the critical, it's kind of like the cornerstone of like our legal process because obviously like outside of like all the corporate stuff and out of like the paperwork when it comes to like working with individuals, um, it's important to realize that like there are a priority. Like they're who you want to assist, they're who you want to, you know, see succeed. Um, from a community, or from a city council standpoint, like you want your community to grow, you want your community to thrive. And that's what victim advocates help, uh, help with. That's what they like help do. Um, when people are committed, when people are involved in a crime or when they are a victim of a crime, they're oftentimes losing things like their self-respect, their dignity, their worth. And so it's important to, again, build them up. And so it's important to again, build them up so they can be, you know, a member of the community again. So they can, you know, continue to build the people up around them. And again, the victim advocates obviously support that. So kind of like a call to action, again, she had no constructive feedback for you guys. So I thought that that was pretty great. But on just like in a, like a general level, kind of like general support that neither like the community can provide or city council can provide is just honestly just understanding what she does. Her role, what she does, why she does it and why it's important. I'm also just like promoting campaigns, understanding that people know there's a victim advocate. They know that there's these programs. And, you know, just kind of expanding what she does, whether it's through, you know, funding another victim advocate. I'm not necessarily like trying to push for anything or let go for anything. But honestly, just like expanding that and understanding why it's there and why it's important to have it is what, you know, is kind of important, what supports victim advocacy. So just some closing thoughts here, just like three main bullet points are impact, support and strength. So when it comes to impact, these victim advocates are making real impact on these people's lives. They're making real life impacts. They're making significant impacts and they're making frequent impacts. Like you would be surprised the amount of like, the amount of work like these victim advocates are doing because you kind of think of it as like a back burner job or one that, you know, isn't as important as like being the attorney or being the prosecutor. But it's something that's even, could be even more impactful for, for certain individuals in certain cases. And then again, the support kind of just feeds into understanding what she does and just realizing that it's irreplaceable support and that it's important. It's an important field and that's kind of like the whole point that I wanted to get across is just give credit where credit's due. And then finally, just strength, strengthening our community. That's what she does. That's what we continue to do or you guys continue to do as a city council. And that's what I was hoping to, you know, kind of point out is like the strength of like the community and how like the victim advocates built that up specifically with Colleen. And then kind of to close, a thought here from Colleen was sadly advocacy is needed in the world we live in, but knowing I can be that support system for the victim keeps me going. So when it comes to, you know, closing down and kind of giving to that conclusion, we see that victim advocacy is something that people know exists, but they don't know what they do. You guys see the numbers, you see the statistics, you see the graphs, you see what's happening, but you don't see what she's doing. And that's kind of what I wanted to do is I wanted to show you guys a day in her life, what she does, why it's important, why it's impactful and different stories or different kind of things she does throughout her work and why it's important and it's impactful again and why, why Colleen's awesome and why Springville's awesome and she helps with that. So yeah.
Beautiful. Thank you, Libby.
Thank you.
Well, we certainly appreciate you and your presentation. And we totally agree with your assessment of Colleen. We love her and we appreciate all that she does. I know that when she comes and makes a presentation, she's very nervous about it. She doesn't need to be because she just really demonstrates us all the hard work that she does through the years. So we appreciate all that you've done and also recognizing her. So thanks, thanks to both of you. See, that was worth waiting for. Okay, we had a late come citizen comment, Joseph May. If you'd like to take three minutes or so, that'd be great. Have you got your son with you? Great.
He'll be driving next year.
That's great. It's all good. We've invited anybody from this school age. You're welcome to come up and sit up here with us if you'd like to. No way. We have candy up here. No way. That won't bribe you off that. Okay, sounds good. Well, they kind of have in the drawer. I have M&amp;M's.
Snickers.
Nope, no Takers. Very good, very good. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for letting, thank you for letting me make a late comment here. We were a little late tonight. I didn't know you could make a comment. So I've lived in Springville with my family for about 11 years. We moved down here. We lived in Salt Lake previously. I'm not from Utah originally. I'm from Washington State. And my wife moved down and I moved down here for a job and we got stuck in this wonderful city. And we have really loved our time here. And every time there's been an election, my wife and I have voted and we participate as much as we can. And one of the biggest problems we have when we vote, especially for city council or mayor or any, is we don't know anybody. And we don't know how to find out anything about them. And so one of the things that, so I'm an attorney. I have my own law practice that I run. And I love Springville. But one of the things that I've always complained about to my wife and the reason I got up here is I brought my son and part of it is I want to show him that if you're a part of a city, you should be involved and your voice should be heard. And so that's why I got up here. Part of my proposal, and even you guys can consider it, you might even see the value in it, is if we were to take the city council and put people coming from different parts of the city so you can actually get a chance to know who you're voting for, for city council. Because every time we, we'll look online, we'll do research, we try to figure out everything we can about people. But with not having deep roots in Springville, we don't know a lot of the people that live here. We know the people, we live over by the Smiths and the rec center over here on the, the west side of town. Like I said, we love it over there. But I think there's a way that the city could improve the, the access for information about who's running for city council, who's running for mayor. I know we do, information is put out there that you're able to digest and try to learn from. But I think that there could be some type of system where these districts, we could say throughout the city, where a member of the city council comes from each district. You could have some type of, you know, more of a gra-, a grassroots effort in those areas where you could get to know that person. You'd probably see them knocking on your door because they would have a specific area where they were trying to draw voters from. But I think you would see an increased participation in civic, civic activities because people would know who was representing them. They would know who to go ask when something's going on in their neighborhood to say, hey, why is this going on this way? A great example is a development that's going on there just east of Meadowbrook Elementary School. I don't know if you guys have seen it, but it, it looks, you know, a four-story high houses. I don't know what they are. They don't, maybe they're houses. I don't know who wants to go up that, go up and down that many stairs. But as I'm driving by, I'm asking, why is this here? Why this whole, this doesn't look like anything here in our neighborhood and the whole city. It's just, it looks like it belongs up in day, in daybreak, which is great. If you want to live in daybreak, live in daybreak. But this is Springville. So, but I haven't, I don't even know who to talk to. And so I think that there's a way, this is my proposal and I'm sure it'll be voted down or maybe you'll take it under consideration. I think it's something that would be great for people here in this community, especially people who newly move in from out of state or for different parts of this state, to be able to know who's representing them and have an opportunity to ask them directly, hey, why are we doing this? Help me, educate me. What's going on here? So that's my proposal.
Very good. I think you should make some great suggestions and I'll take your suggestions and I'll work with Kim. And there's an election coming up here at the end of this year. And so there'll be some candidates who'll be submitting their names. And so you need to be able to get to know them and who they are and have a chance to meet them and, and really find out some events that they go to where you can ask them questions and find out kind of their policies and whatnot. So it's a very important part of the process. And interestingly enough is that we have people all the time, and I actually thought this myself is, you know, what good is one little person going to do? But I can tell you that from my experience, somebody standing there, taking the courage to do it and being able to stand up in front of the city council. There's been a number of things that we've done because of somebody standing up and saying, gee, we didn't even know this or we didn't think about this. I mean, we're just, we're just like you.
Yeah.
And we just need to know and understand and we don't have the ability to, to have a broad brush of the whole city. So you sending emails to us, conversing with us, calling us up, setting up appointments, we're just happy to do that. But we'll take your suggestion and I'll, I'll work with Kim and Troy, so.
I mean, I think you guys are doing a great job. I just, I think we could improve the transparency between who we're voting.
Yeah, yeah. I agree with you completely. Thank you very much. Now, the question is for your son. Did he do an okay job, your dad? Up or down? Thumbs up, thumbs down? He kind of missed up on the grades, didn't he? Yeah, he's just marginal. Okay, okay, very good. Okay, let's get to our first item of business, Bruce, if you'll take us through a resolution on a tentative budget.
Do it. You need to approve the consent agenda.
Oh, whoa, whoa, sorry. Yep, I missed it. I need motion on approval of the consent agenda.
I motion that we approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Thank you for catching that. Okay, Bruce?
There's a cell phone sitting here that I'm not sure where.
He really wants us to be connected to him.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, in many respects, is a culmination of several months' worth of budget preparation work that both the staff and city council has been engaged in since last fall. Most recently, last week, we met in a special study session to consider the tentative budget. You as the council are very aware of what's included in that as we've been considering it for some time. But for the benefit of the public that's here tonight and those that may be watching online, I'll just quickly walk through the process and then what I hope is a high enough level presentation for you to sort of record the efforts and the considerations that have gone into the preparation of the tentative budget. This budget will address considerations and services for the fiscal 2026 budget year, which begins July 1st, 2025 and ends June 30th, 2026. Under state law, the city council is required to adopt a tentative budget by the first council meeting in May. So this, that's what this meeting is here tonight. Once the council has adopted the tentative budget, we release it to the public for consideration and examination. We also tonight, included in the resolution, have plans to set a public hearing for the June 17th council meeting where the, or the public will have an opportunity to provide comments and then the city council can further deliberate on the budget and adopt a final budget before July 1st, when that budget would go into effect. I've just prepared a few slides that kind of hit the high points of this budget. I'll walk through those quickly. If you've got questions, feel free to stop me along the way. Otherwise, I'll just sort of plow through. First, from a recent presentation that I attended from Zion's Bank, an economic overview, sort of provided some economic backdrop to our preparation and considerations as we prepared the budget. The current federal administration is dealing with some trade policies and government cuts that are leading to considerable uncertainty and risk in the economy. And it's unsure, we're unsure exactly what impacts that'll have on this city. And as a result, we've tried to be as conservative as possible in forecasting revenues and also budgeting expenses as tightly as possible so that it will be unaffected should there be an economic downturn, which may be more likely, at least some economists are predicting that. Consumer confidence seems to be dropping and that could have a negative effect on sales tax, which is one of the largest revenue streams for the city. We are still seeing pretty strong labor market, perhaps too strong and from the standpoint that it's driving wages higher. And as an employer, we have to take that into consideration. And inflation is also sort of hovering at the 3% level, which is slightly higher than what we'd like to see it at and does have some effect on our ability to provide services. And so you'll see the impacts of that. Very quick, high level, the general fund budget, which is the fund of the city's budget that deals with general governmental services. This would be police and fire, parks and recreation, all the ancillary services like administration, legal and HR are all adopted within the general fund of the budget. And that budget is just over, or just short of $35 million, including transfers, which is actually down about 11 and a half percent from last year. But that's primarily as a result of the fact, as we talked about last week, of shifting the streets department from a department within the general fund to a standalone fund. We're doing that primarily for accounting reasons. If we kind of were to pull the streets fund back into the general fund, you'd see that the general fund budget is basically flat compared to last year. The total city budget is $118 million, which is down about 2.2% from last year. And that's primarily, primarily a result of reduced capital expenditure. We had some unusually large capital projects that were part of the current year's budget that we're in right now. In terms of personnel, very little movement there. Only 0.5 FTEs added to the, to the personnel count. We're at about 337 full-time equivalents within the budget in the various funds of the city. This budget does include an inflationary-driven 3% increase to property tax within the city. That generates about $121,000 for the general fund and really equates to about a $5 annual fee to the average property owner, residential property owner in the city. You're aware that we transfer, an operating transfer from the enterprise funds, those are the utility funds of the city, to the general fund to help offset the need for higher property taxes. That transfer rate is 6.5% and has been for a number of years. And we're proposing to keep that transfer rate the same. On the utility fund side of things, we do have a range of increases that are being proposed there between 2 and 3%. Again, these are driven by considerations related to inflation and that should result in about a $5 a month utility fee increase for the average residential user. Just some highlights from the general fund. On the revenue side, we're forecasting about $4.5 million in property tax, again, reflecting that 3% rate increase. We're projecting about $10.4 million in sales tax, which is really flat compared to this year. We normally see some fairly healthy growth, but we've seen some softening in receipts in the current year. And so we've been conservative on that front for next year. Energy use tax is also a major source of revenue. That's tax that comes from electricity sales as well as natural gas sales within the community. We see that just short of $3 million for next year. Intergovernmental revenues, these are primarily grants and receipts from state and other governmental entities are just short of $1 million. That's down 62%, but that's primarily because we're now recognizing what was the largest intergovernmental revenue source, which is the C road funds coming, rather than into the general fund, it'll be coming into the streets fund. So we haven't actually lost that revenue. It's just being accounted for in a different place. And then we're seeing charges for services up about 5%. Most of that is ambulance fees and that's being offset to some extent by a projected decrease in revenue with the CRC in anticipation of the opening of a new gym here in town along with a new rec center to be opened soon in Spanish Ford. We're expecting some impact from that. And finally, about $11.5 million in revenue in the form of transfers and also utilization of reserves. When I say utilization of re- reserves, just for clarity, there's about $3 million of C road restricted reserves that are in the general fund right now that we've put in the budget for accounting purposes to move to the streets fund. So that's most of what that money is. We are proposing however, to use about $276,000 in, in general fund reserves to pay for the general plan and development code update that's currently underway. That's going to be unexpended in the current year. This is a quick, quick snapshot of the general fund transfers. So these are transfers coming from the various utility funds, water, sewer, electric, stormwater, solid waste. And you can see it broken down. There's actually about three different types of transfers that are happening. The first one is an administrative fee. So this is a transfer from those enterprise funds for services that they receive. So there's actually a nexus between services that those funds receive and the payment that's made. The finance department calculates what that allocation should be. And these are for general fund services like utility billing, finance, HR, legal services that are housed within the general fund. And then those services are provided to the enterprise fund so that they don't have to hire it out separately. And then the 6.5% transfer rate that we talked about before is the operating transfer. So that's 6.5% of the operating revenues of each of those individual funds is transferred to the general fund for general fund purposes. And finally, those utility funds- And finally, those utility funds also provide to the general fund utilities free of charge. We do account for the value of those, but there's no exchange of dollars on that, but we do value it at about $900,000. It's a total of about $8 million in transfers coming from the enterprise funds to the general fund. In terms of personnel, really, the only major change is the Public Works Department is proposing to convert a part-time engineer position that's in the current year's budget to a full-time position for next year, to assist with engineering and design work, and to further some of the capital projects that are on the ledger for the Public Works Department. Community Development, Police, and Power are all leaving some positions intentionally open and monitoring the budget impact for need, as whether they hire those. Some of that's a result of the fact that new development activity is relatively low, and so there's less demand for time in those various departments. There is included a 3% cost of living adjustment, and that'll go into effect in July, and then an additional 3.2% merit increase. That won't go into effect until January of 2026, so it's effectively half of that, about a 1.6% increase for the budget year. We've also absorbed benefit cost increases of about 6.5%, and that's for the various insurances that are provided as part of the compensation package for employees, and there's no proposed change to those benefit plans. In terms of capital projects in the general fund, there's about $1.1 million budgeted currently. Parks maintenance projects of about $454,000, and public arts projects of about $250,000. Separate from that now, previously included within the general fund budget, but now in a separate Streets Capital Project Fund, will have $4.1 million of projects. Most of that to C-Road maintenance, and most of that money comes from the state as a distribution of the gas tax that's collected statewide. And then there are some additional funds being added to the 620 South Canyon Road intersection and also the southbound lanes of 12th West from 250 North to Center Street. Our Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund proposes $2.4 million in renewal and replacement of existing vehicles and equipment, and $2.3 million in the Facilities Fund for renewal and replacement projects related to the various city facilities. Probably one of the biggest project there is some work to be done on the roof at the art museum. You're aware of the PAR Fund, these are dollars that come in through sales tax, and in the current budget year, we're proposing to program about $715,000 of those PAR funds, $585,000 of that for capital projects, some additional improvements on the southeast corner of the rec center, some work on a festival street related to the Art Loop Initiative, and some additional improvements on the Dry Creek Trail. They're also proposing to award $70,000 in mini-grants. These are partnerships with not-for-profit entities within the city that have applied for the grants, and then about $60,000 in additional programming. These have all been recommended through the PAR Board and are included in the budget as recommended by them. Moving now to the enterprise funds, so these are the utility funds of the city. You can see here a sort of historic breakdown of rate increases. It's been the policy and practice of the city to try to keep pace with inflation, and that's, again, the theme for this year. On the power side, about a 2.5% increase on residential electric rates, and then for most of the rest of the Public Works divisions, a 3% rate increase. We anticipate that results in about a $5 per month increase to the average residential user. This highlights from the Public Works divisions, which include water, sewer, stormwater, streets, and solid waste. They're making efforts to coordinate projects as we dig up streets and make repairs, to try to do that in a coordinated manner, so there's not a need to dig up streets again in a short period of time. There is considerable focus this year on project design and construction. There's also a cost of service analysis and rate design efforts underway for water and sewer. We've talked a number of times about a transportation utility fee. There's nothing budgeted for this year, but that initiative is being studied and developed, and anticipate we'll come back to the Council later in the summer with some updates on that study and initiative. On the capital project side, I already mentioned Streets projects of about $4.1 million. In the Water Fund, the largest project that's scheduled for this next year is a replacement of the South Main Street water pipeline. That's about a $3 million project. And then about $3.25 million in various fire flow deficiency corrections, and also $1.2 million of pressurized irrigation. This is actually a project that'll be undertaken by a developer, and the city will reimburse for the city's share of that project. On the sewer side of things, in the wastewater reclamation facility, there's some air rotors, some mechanical improvements that are being made and budgeted at about $3.25 million, and some other system improvements of about $315,000. On the stormwater side, some new development reimbursements. Again, this is related to the Lakeside Landing Project, that's about $400,000, another detention pond at 16th South and 12th West of $400,000. Excuse me, I mentioned in the Power Department, depending on the rate class, 2% to 3% rate increases, with 2.5% going to the residential rate class. It's currently budgeting about 2% more than this year, $500,000 on the power purchase budget line item. And there's currently three positions that are being temporarily left unfilled as demand for services there is a little softer, and also just an experiment to see if we can gain some efficiencies there and sort of restructure the department to be more efficient and cost-effective. The Power Department's coming off of a big capital year with the construction of a new substation, and also the new generators at the White House Power Plant, so this is a little slower year on the capital side, but still a half million or so being spent on the Baxter Substation, and some renewal and replacement costs on the distribution circuits of $300,000. And then we're still budgeting about $800,000 for new development transformers and materials as we do line extensions there. Finally, the golf fund, revenues are projected to be up 22%. That's the result of a couple of things. Number one, a 9% rate increase that's intended to be implemented over the winter, so starting January 1st or end of December, I guess I should say, and then the fact that we've gone through a shift. Up until this year, the Pro Shop has actually been owned by the Pro and operated by the Pro, and we've renegotiated that contract, and the city will now be taking ownership of the retailing operation of the Pro Shop, and so we anticipate some additional revenues there, and that's reflected in the projected revenues for next year. Utilization is as high as I think I've ever seen it. They were reporting for calendar 2024, 91% utilization factor in the high seasons between May and September, and taking it annually 75%. That's extraordinarily high usage. I've pretty much given up on playing golf at Hubble Creek, because you just can't get a tee time, which is a good problem for the city to have. In terms of capital projects, continuing their efforts to replace cart paths, and so there's about $30,000 budgeted, and that's sort of an ongoing annual effort. They are budgeting $90,000 for a Mini-X and a utility cart to help maintain the property, and then also making contributions to both Bridge and Maintenance Shed Replacement Sinking Fund. So those projects are a little larger, and will happen in a couple of years, but they're making an incremental contribution to a sinking fund of about $70,000. I went through that very quickly. It felt quickly. Didn't look quickly as I looked into your faces, but it felt quickly.
It was riveting, Bruce.
That's the end of the presentation. If you've got questions, I'm happy to entertain them. Otherwise, we look for...
Questions?
I don't have any questions, just every year when we do a budget and we raise property taxes, we always get some pushback from residents, and I think a lot of times they have a tough time understanding the purpose for that. Since you have the podium and the microphone, can you explain just a little bit about what that's all about and what our philosophy is behind those small property tax, or inflationary property tax?
This is one that has a simple explanation for me, as I see property tax revenues coming in in the aggregate, because I see it from the city's perspective as sort of one number that comes from the county. It's a much difficult, much more difficult explanation to an individual property owner who sees their own property tax bill and maybe sees something different from year to year from what I say out loud. But the simple explanation is that, under state law and as administered by the county, property tax revenues to the city remain flat unless the City Council or the governing body intentionally changes the rate at which we collect the revenue. In other words, for a property that is assessed at, let's say, $100 on any given year, in the ensuing years, we, as the city, only receive $100 from that property. So if the value of the property goes up, the property tax rate that they are assessed by goes down, so that the city still only collects $100. So there's an inverse relationship between the rate that the city charges, or the county assesses, and the value of the property. And conversely, if the property value goes down, the rate goes up, so that the city still collects $100. Now, that, in large measure, insulates the city from downturns in the housing market, but by the same token, it does not provide any benefit or upside to the city for increasing property values. And that would be fine if we lived in an economy that had no inflation. However, we tend to see inflation every year. Now, for the last number of years, that inflation rate has been very low, sub 2%, and so it's a little masked in terms of the impact of that, but as we've gone through the last couple of years where inflation has been 7%, 8%, 9%, it becomes considerably more apparent that the cost to provide services goes up, and property tax revenues are staying flat. Now, the city does recognize increased property tax revenues, but only as the city grows. So as there are new businesses and new residences built, we do receive that new revenue, but it's at the same relative rate that everyone else has been paying all along. So the policy that we've been working towards, and am now in our third year of implementing, is to try to match the property tax rate with the inflation rate, so that the buying power of the city, in order to provide the services that we do at the service level that we've grown accustomed, is not compromised by losing buying power to inflation. Does that answer the question?
Yep, thanks.
Other questions? Oh, excuse me. Go ahead.
I just had a similar ad. People messaged me about the transfers, and that they felt that money taken from taxing, that we then transfer into, I believe, the general fund, that then gets put to what I would consider overhead, that that's not a legal thing to do, which, could you speak to that a little bit? Just because I know they're listening, so...
Yeah, it's a policy consideration, is legal under state law. There are some disclosure requirements. We just sent out the disclosure letter in the most recent utility bill that just went out, first part of this week, I believe, so, it might have been the end of last week. We'll post that online as well, and so an explanation of that is available. Sort of the thought process behind it is, all of the utilities that are provided within the city are really owned by the residents of the city, and it's something akin to a return on investment for ownership in those utilities, is a return to the city for general purposes that keep property taxes that much lower. In other words, if there were no transfers coming in, you'd have to offset that revenue with property taxes to make up the difference, if you wanted to keep service levels the same. And one of the important things to consider there is, from a taxing policy perspective, the transfers come from users of utilities, which is pretty much everybody in the city. And so not-for-profits or tax-exempt entities are still paying a power bill, for example, and thus a portion of their power bill is being transferred to the general fund for general city services. If all that revenue needed to be collected under property tax, property tax rates would have to more than double in order to replace that revenue, and only property owners would be paying that. So any entities, schools, churches, not-for-profit entities that don't pay property tax would not participate in generating that revenue. So it's a way to diversify the revenue streams that come to the city, and it is legal under state law.
Other questions? Word got back to me that the mayor was withholding funds for the purchase of golf carts. So I just want to be on record that I have no idea what they're talking about, so Stacy?
As the Finance Director, I will say I am also unaware.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, if there's no other questions, I'll entertain a motion or a non-motion.
I'll motion to approve Resolution Number 2025-16 to adopt the City of Springville tentative budget for fiscal year 2025 through 2026, and set a public hearing for adoption of the final budget on June 17th, 2025, at 7:00 PM.
Second.
Okay, a real call vote. Mike?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Mindy?
Yes.
Logan?
Yes.
Jake?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. John?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The next two items deal with the same property. Let me pull this up. Give you just a little bit of history before we get into talking about both land use regulation, amendment, and ordinance that's before you tonight, and then also a possible development agreement that's before you tonight. The property that we're talking about is a property that is historically known as the Santana Raceway, which is just south of 1600 South, and if you were to take 1750 West and head south on 1750 West, you'd run right into it. And many of us who have grown up here in Springville, well, as a child, I remember laying in bed and hearing the race cars go around and around. It was kind of fun to have that racetrack here in Springville. Quick history of it, in 2015, with UDOT knowing that they were going to do some changes to this interchange, they had the Santana property, and at that time, MAG's rules did not allow them to hold the property, and so Springville ended up being the owner of the property, even though Springville had not purchased the property. After 2015, Springville did purchase some property along I-15 here in this location in order to make sure that UDOT would have enough to do that off-ramp there at 1600 South and I-15, off and on ramps. And then what occurred is, in 2013 time period, the city purchased the UDOT's interest after UDOT figured out which property they needed, and you can see here, this property to the north of the Santana Raceway, it's also part of that same property UDOT took for what they need for the 1600 South and for the off-ramps, and then also along the freeway over here, they took property. And so what was left over was roughly 45, 46 acres that Springville owned. Springville then, in 2023, I think in the staff report, I accidentally put 2024, annexed the property into Springville and zoned the property as regional retail commercial. And the idea was, this is a property right off the freeway, and it was going to be an opportunity for the city to have some sales tax come back into Springville. In 2024, the city went out with an RFP to see who would be interested in purchasing this property. The RFP looked at two different things. One was the value of the purchase of the property, and the other one was sales tax use that could come to the property. As part of that RFP, Sun Pro Corporation, or the Sun Pro Corporation, was chosen as an entity to enter into by the Council based upon the sales tax that would come in and also the purchase price of the property. Now, they're not looking to purchase all of the property, just to give you a feel for it. Here's the property with the... Uh, here's the property with, uh, the subdivision plat that is, uh, I believe, ready to be approved. And so right now, uh, just again for the background, uh, s- the Sun Pro Corporation is looking to purchase, uh, roughly twenty-eight acres uh, to the south of the property. If you look at this, uh, the top of the screen is north. Uh, the off-ramp comes like this, uh, into Springville. And then you can, this is where, uh, sixteen hundred south will be once it's all done. There will be left over as after this, uh, process, if, uh, it does close, uh, roughly twelve acres in lot one and roughly five point five acres in lot two. So that's the background. Now, just coming back, uh, to the regional retail commercial zoning district. And the reason why I'm giving this background is because, uh, the retail, uh, commercial manufacturing, uh, use that's before you tonight is only allowed in this zoning district. And right now, the old Santana property is the only property zoned, uh, regional retail commercial. Uh, the purpose of the retail region, re- the regional retail commercial zone, uh, is here on the screen before you. Uh, it's to provide a, a, a range of retail-oriented, uh, commercial. Uh, and then you can also see intensity of uses, concentrated activities, major commercial destinations. Uh, in looking at this, uh, I, what is before you is, uh, a retail use, the retail, uh, commercial manufacturing use. But I was reminded, I don't know if it was Troy or somebody else, that at one point, there was, uh, three lumber yards in downtown Springville. I remember Colob and I, I, right now, we still have Sun Pro, but I don't, uh,
Grand Lumber.
Grand.
Grand Lumber. There we go. Was that, was there one on, over here too at one point?
Colob was over here. Grand was out on fifty-one.
Okay, alright.
Well, there was another one that was up on fourth east and fourth south.
So, so.
Yeah.
Very good. So, I, I, it does fit within the zone. And right before you or here on the screen is what the definition of retail commercial manufacturing is. It's manufacturing of materials to great finish lumber, doors and millwork products to be sold as tangible, personal property to building contractors with the point of sale being within Springville City. And that was one of the reasons, uh, when we went out with the RFP, that this was, uh, so attractive, uh, to the council and also to staff. Uh, the amount of sales tax on something like this is, uh, kind of like a mid-box store. It's not as, as well, as good as a Walmart, but it's also a little bit better than, uh, some of the other, uh, uh, smaller stores or box stores. So you're probably looking right around with the numbers that we've seen, uh, starting out around fifty to fifty-five million in sales tax. So it will bring in some, uh, sales tax, uh, revenue to the city. Uh, in the zone, one of the concerns, uh, that, uh, staff was looking at it and has been, uh, mentioned by others is w- we want to make sure that, uh, the, the pathway along sixteen hundred south, uh, there's still some good uses in property up there. As I've said, uh, previously, there's roughly, uh, two lots, a twelve-acre lot and a five-and-a-half acre lot that will come off of, uh, sixteen hundred south. So in order, uh, to utilize this, uh, use in the RRC zone, uh, the use has to be on a lot that is entirely located at least three hundred fifty feet south of the south right-of-way boundary line of sixteen hundred south. And so this is kind of showing you where that boundary line is. And just to give you a fill for it, I tried to take some pictures, uh, showing you how far back that is. Uh, this right here, you can see is a trailer off a semi and a few things like that. But if you drive by there, there's a tree and it roughly is right where that tree is running from east to west. And so you can kind of see it from a little bit different angle. This picture was taken up on right now coming off of, uh, the I fifteen off-ramp into Springville. It's just a bunch of dirt right now, but I was trying to give you a fill again to see. Now, if I could, I'd like to back up because I did miss a slide at the beginning, uh, that I just wanted to make sure that I showed you. Because there was roughly, uh, five, uh, questions the planning commission had in making their recommendation. Uh, the first was, uh, will this use work for all future property owners in the RRC commercial zoning district? And as you look at the definition of what, uh, retail, uh, commercial manufacturing use is, it's very limited. It's very specific. And so if you did have somebody besides, uh, the Sun Pro Corporation come in, they would have to meet that definition, meaning they'd have to have lumber, door or millwork products. And they'd have to have their point of sale in Springville. And so as long as they met that, uh, I think it would work. It'd work for the city because we would also get, uh, the sales tax off of, uh, uh, off of that use. And then one big thing that they brought up too, uh, was after eliminating office warehouse type uses along the freeway, why were you bringing something back that looks very similar to that? Uh, and again, this is limited to a very specific zone. It's on the southern, uh, part of the property. It's not going to be allowed anywhere else along, uh, I fifteen freeway. They seem to be good with, with that response. And so they did recommend, uh, moving forward with this, even with, uh, that concern. Uh, they were really concerned about what this looked like off of sixteen hundred south. They weren't that concerned about what it would look like off of I fifteen. And discussions with the council, I got the feel that the council was a little bit concerned about what it would look of, of I fifteen. And we'll get to that as well. And then, uh, what does the sales, or how does the sales tax work? Again, this is just like a retail sales with the point of, uh, uh, sell being in Springville. So the sales tax comes to Springville. Now, uh, Bill Gammel, uh, who was at the planning commission, wanted to be here tonight. He couldn't be here tonight. He did point out that there, every now and again, there might be, uh, some cells that come off of this property, but go into other states. It's a very rare, and one of the reasons why they have located here in Springville is to serve people around Springville. Um, but they do have some preferred customers that every now and again, very, very rare, uh, they might, uh, run something to a different state. And that would be treated a little bit differently with use taxes and other such things. And then what will the buildings look like? And we'll get to that in the slides. So I just wanted to point out what the concerns were with, uh, the planning commission or at least the questions. And after we went through, uh, what I'm going to present to you, they seem to be okay to recommend, uh, the use. So I apologize. I'm going through these slides again. Kind of mixed up the order. Uh, one of the, uh, things, uh, a couple of different standards that's, uh, within, uh, the, the ordinance before you is that seventy percent of the lot area can be used for storage and fifteen percent of lot area can be used as buildings. Uh, there has recently been the same type of use built down in Saint George. And this is what it looks like. Now, what the plan is here in Springville is a little bit different than this. This building is actually up closer to the front of the property. And then this building would not be there as part of, uh, what is proposed right now in Springville. You can kind of get a fill for what, what is going on in the storage area. And, uh, from my understanding in, uh, talking with Bill, is what, uh, they do with the lumber is they put packages together for different buildings. And so you can kind of see how those packages are being, uh, lined up. And then a builder comes, uh, they pick up the package, they come to this area, they make the exchange. And then they take it to, uh, the building, uh, lot to be built on. So that's how it, it works. Uh, there's, it's a little bit different use. It's there, you mean, you don't see a whole lot of big dirt piles and other such things, but there will be stacks of lumber on the property. Uh, landscaping, uh, the landscaping that is in the ordinance before you has to either meet the RRC regulations or, uh, be approved in a development agreement. Uh, in the RRC leg- regulations, there has to be a minimum landscaping of at least ten percent. And the plan I'm going to show you has actually a little bit over ten percent, but not much, just barely over ten percent. There has to be a landscape buffer on the north side of the property that would be fifteen percent. And then there has to be parking lot interior landscaping. So that's what's in the, the current ordinance that they'd have to meet if we didn't put this in is those three things at the bottom. Here is the landscaping plan, uh, that's proposed to you. And it's also, uh, part of the development agreement uh, that, uh, is also before you tonight. And just to give you a couple of highlights, along I fifteen, which is on the left of the screen, uh, there are, uh, Colorado spruce trees up and down, uh, the left side. And one thing to be, uh, to take note of is there's two billboards out there. And the reason why I'm telling you this, I'm going to show you some pictures to kind of show you, uh, what's going to happen with these, or kind of the location of these trees. Uh, there's a north and then also a south billboard. The trees go a little bit beyond the south billboard. And then what you can see up here, uh, between the properties to the north, you can see the, the trees. You can see the, the different, uh, uh, landscaping in the parking lots and so forth. And so that's what the landscaping looks like. And as part of the landscaping, there's also a fence plan. And what you're seeing here is this blue line to the north of the property is a three-foot, uh, solid, uh, wall fence. Or solid wall, I apologize. And then back here by the buildings, this black line is a six-foot solid wall. And the wall will look like this. So this is the six-foot solid wall that's at the back by the buildings. And then it would be the same wall, but half of that right at the boundary line. So any questions on the landscaping? I've tried to, oh, this is a couple of pictures. In Spanish Fork, they have built, uh, uh, a new building. This is, I believe, Sun Pro and Sun Rock are sharing the same office building right now in Spanish Fork. You can kind of see their parking area. And then you can see a six-foot wall building in the back. It's kind of hard to see. On this one, there is some dirt piles in the back. I tried to get some pictures to kind of show you other things. On the other side, you can see that there is a tank back there that's elevated, uh, and then the wall, and then over on this side. Now, these pictures are taken, uh, roughly three hundred feet, uh, back of the wall. And the reason why I say that is I've tried to show you, uh, where these walls are going to be in the next slide and how far back they are from sixteen hundred, uh, south. So from sixteen hundred south, there will be a street that comes in with a cul-de-sac. At the end of that cul-de-sac, it's roughly five hundred feet. So at five hundred feet, you will see a three-foot, uh, high wall along, uh, this location here. And then the next thing you will see are the buildings at six hundred and twenty feet roughly. And then roughly at seven hundred forty feet, you'll see a six-foot high wall that comes across. And so I've tried, I apologize for the crudeness of this next slide. But I tried to show you, uh, a couple of things sight-wise, what you're going to see from the I fifteen overpass. So I've estimated the I fifteen overpass at being about twenty-five feet. If the buildings are two stories, you're looking at twenty to twenty-five feet, oh, about, uh, six hundred and twenty feet away. So where the buildings are, you will not see any of the storage area whatsoever. Um, and then also too, you will see, be able to see over the six-foot high wall, but it's also going to give a little bit of screening. But when you're down on elevation of where sixteen hundred south is right now, you won't see anything behind it. And if you're up on the overpass looking over the buildings, all you're going to see are mountains and sky. So that's kind of what you're looking at there. And again, I apologize for the crudeness of this. I didn't know how better to show. But that was one of the main things that they, the planning commission was worried about, is what is it going to look like over here from sixteen hundred south? Oh, the other thing I wanted to, to show you is again, on this landscaping plan, to show you what's going on over here on the west side with these trees, again, Colorado spruce trees. Um, this is to show you looking south, what you're seeing. There's, uh, I believe this is the farthest south billboard, uh, that, that's on there. This is over by where the train comes underneath the, the freeway. Um, I don't know who this person is, but they did jump the fence. Um, but you can see right through here, uh, how tall it is underneath where, uh, where it goes underneath the, where the train goes underneath the freeway. And then this gives you an overall picture, again, the south billboard, the north billboard. Uh, and then the, the south lot starts right in this general area. Uh, right here, I'm going to show you some pictures of where one is, where two is and where three is to get a kind of a fill uh, for how the trees would work. So one, you're right here. And I've taken a picture of, uh, a semi up above. And you can't even, you can barely see the top of the window here. Uh, one of the reasons why they didn't bring the trees clear down is they're really, it's not going to really do much to screen anything down by where the railroad track is. Now, this right here is the area right next to, uh, the south bor- uh, billboard. And now you can start to see a window of a semi truck. And then this is the north billboard. Uh, and you can now see quite a bit of the, the semi, uh, truck there. And this is where it's the low point. And then it starts going back up, uh, as you head north. Uh, this right here is to give you a fill of the farthest south tree. It would be probably in this general location where you got the south and the north, uh, billboard there. And then.
Will the trees run on the left of that, uh, billboard there?
It will, yeah. So this.
On the west side.
This fence line right here is the property line, uh, between, uh, the UDOT property and, uh, the current city property. So it would run, uh, right in twenty feet, uh, area off of that fence line.
Thanks.
So, and then this is just some more pictures to kind of give you a fill of what it looks like, uh, out there on that property. I've tried to step back away from, uh, the freeway on these pictures to kind of show you what it looks like from the east. Uh, again, uh, you can see clear out here from up above, if you're driving a, a nice semi down in this location. But I don't know that, uh, those trees are going to do much if they're right there by it. So, and then this kind of shows you a little bit more of, of what it looks like out there. Oh, what I think of the reason I took that and put it in here is again, it shows you how it comes down and then goes right back up, uh, height-wise. Uh, the other thing that's in the ordinance is right now, our ordinance only allows, uh, streets in and a cul-de-sac to be up to four hundred and fifty feet. Uh, and so we have in here, uh, an ordinance that allows for a commercial street to be up to five hundred feet. Uh, the four hundred and fifty feet, my understanding is, um, more for residential. As you look at other cities, they go as high as six hundred and fifty feet in commercial areas. And so given this, it also pushes, if any, if somebody's worried about this use off of sixteen hundred south, it pushes it, uh, to the south. So, any questions on that? And then, uh, the buildings, uh, one of the reasons why I showed the count, or the planning commission, the buildings is they were concerned what the buildings would look like. And, uh, and so they could have had the opportunity if they wanted to do some kind of design standards or something else. This right here is the building, uh, that's currently in Spanish Fork. It's somewhat similar to the one that's down in, uh, Saint George. I think the Saint George is more of a, a block, uh, type building, kind of, uh, like that wall in areas. Um, and so this is the one that would be the office building. And just to show you, let me see if I, let's see if I have a, I apologize. But the office building is the building to the east. And then, so the office building is this building right here. And then the other building is more of the manufacturing building. And that looks more like this. Now, it is a metal building. It's not a traditional metal building, uh, in the, that it, it doesn't have, uh, uh, I just forgot how the, the, the me-
Origated?
Thank you, yes. I forgot that word. I apologize. So this is the west building. And here's what you would see as you're coming, um, off of the freeway. And I just wanted to give you a fill for that. Uh, that building in trying to estimate how far, uh, it is shown on at least this site plan is about a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty feet off. Now, I'm not trying to, to make light of anything, uh, but, uh, this could be a nice area for public art, uh, to get involved and to kind of do some kind of nice mural coming into Springville. And I don't know how to do any sort of, uh, good, uh, art.
Just call me next time.
Yes, exactly. I didn't have time. So, so, but you could do something that's kind of cool coming off of the freeway as you're coming into Springville too. And that's something, uh, I would assume that, uh, the Sun Pro Corporation and our public art could get together and do something kind of fun. So anyway, that is it for, I think the next thing we're talking about is the development agreement. They're two separate items, but that is it for the retail commercial manufacturing. So any questions for me?
So, uh, is the retail commercial manufacturing is only applicable to the Santana Raceway property? Or is it any RCC property?
Only one property right now that's zoned in the RRC, uh, zoning district, and that's this property.
So if the city did another RCC.
Uh, well, RRC, I apologize.
RRC, okay. RRC, then the RRM would go with it or RCM would go with it?
It could, but at that point, I think, uh, you'd want to make sure that you maybe adjusted what the RCM is all about. And meaning that you'd probably want to, to see if it would fit. Right now, it has to be three hundred and fifty feet south of sixteen hundred south. So if you were to do it along sixteen hundred south, you could do it three hundred and fifty feet. So if you were to do it along sixteen hundred south, you could do it three hundred and fifty feet south of sixteen hundred south. Uh, but that's the only place that it's allowed, is in the RRC, three hundred and fifty feet south of sixteen hundred south.
As the zones go in the city?
Yeah.
The, uh, the properties between sixteen hundred south and this piece of property, that, what was it, six hundred and fifty feet, or whatever it was? I, I don't remember how far it was. But anyway, what's, what is, is that zone retaining its current zoning? And what kind of business, for example, would go in there? Do you have an example of something that might go in there?
Well, right now, the way that, uh, this, these two lots are zoned, or the entire RRC, is only allowing for any retail, uh, use. And so when the council zoned this property, uh, underneath the RRC zoning district, they're very uh, careful to only allow underneath what is allowed, uh, retail uses. So you could see, I don't know, car dealerships, uh, restaurant, I mean, anything that has something to do with, with retail.
Okay. Anything on the railroad? Uh, uh, we're probably not involved in it, but are they, are they moving forward with the railroad and getting a spur for that property?
They are. Uh, and Greg Flint, uh, is here tonight with, uh, the Sun Pro Corporation. He could probably give you an update on that. But that is something that I understand, uh, is moving forward pretty nicely for-
It has nothing to do with, with this moving forward. It'll, it'll happen even if that doesn't happen.
Yeah, so, uh, with that spur, and that's something that, uh, is mentioned in the purchase agreement, uh, it's something that we've been working on doing during, uh, due diligence. But like I said, uh, Mr. Flint is here, and he could, uh, speak to that a lot better than I could. But the spur itself i- is to come this direction. So it comes off here and comes right in here to this area.
Okay, other questions for John? Okay, very good. Would anyone like to declare a conflict?
I'll abstain due to conflict of interest.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number zero-seven dash twenty-two-five, amending Springville City Code and Land Use Regulations to define set standards for and include the retail, commercial, manufacturing use within the regional retail, commercial zoning district.
I will second that.
Okay, it's a roll call vote. Logan?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Jake?
Yes.
Very good. You're up.
Again, thank you, Mayor and, uh, council members. This next item is dealing with a development agreement, and just a little bit of background on the development agreement, is part of, uh, well, we do development agreements regularly when it comes to development, developing property. But part of, of the purchase agreement also contemplated a development agreement. And there was three things in the purchase agreement, uh, that the council, uh, had agreed to in that agreement to, to address in a development agreement. Before I get to those three things though, I just wanna mention some of the general things that are in the development agreement. Under the purchase agreement, uh, there is a provision that talks about giving a water credit to, uh, the Sun Pro Corporation. Uh, when we received the property, we did receive some, uh, strawberry water, and then there was also, uh, two water rights dealing with wells on the property. And so in order to maintain what you saw as the landscaping, they've asked for a credit of fifteen acre feet, and that is very similar to the, the proper, the water that we've taken with the property. We can't give up that water, 'cause once we take ownership of it, it has to stay in the Springville's name, and that was part of, uh, the original agreed-upon, uh, purchase agreement. Uh, there, uh, is mentioned in the development agreement a right of first refusal. The reason why that's in there is there's those two billboards. Uh, whenever, uh, as part of those billboard leases, uh, with us selling the property to another entity, they had the right of first re- refusal for thirty days. We did give them proper notice. They had the thirty days. Uh, they decided not to exercise, uh, that right of first refusal. Uh, there is in the development agreement, Sun Pro is required to meet all subdivision requirements, including the installation of all subdivision, uh, public improvements. Uh, in the development agreement, the city will pay electrical extension fees, and then there's other general terms like indemnity, uh, should they do something to, to cause, uh, you know, damage. They'll step in and indemnify us, notices, attorney fees, modifications, et cetera. Now to the three things, uh, that are in the development agreement.
John?
Yes?
Go back to that other slide. Now, the city will pay the electrical extension fees?
Yes.
Is that normal? Is that?
Electrical extension fees, uh, it are a normal part of, uh, subdivision improvements. Um, and so whenever this happens, our, uh, power department gets together and, uh, puts together what the cost would be for somebody to develop the property. And so that is, uh, what we have agreed to pay, uh, as part of this.
Is it normal for us to pay that, or is it normal what a developer pays?
It's normal for the subdivision developer to pay for it and where the subdivision-
Yeah.
Got it.
So even, yeah, thanks for that clarification. It's still our property, and we can't legally, uh, sell the property until it is appropriately subdivided.
I forgot, we own it in our subdivision.
Yes, and they're helping us with the, the improvements.
Thank you.
So, uh, with the improvements, the subdivisional improvement costs, uh, in your staff report, uh, I have, I put in there, it was roughly eight hundred and, I think, seventy-nine thousand, uh, plus another hundred thousand, uh, for contingency. Since that time, uh, uh, that we got those numbers, uh, Sun Pro has sharpened the pencil and figured out all the different, uh, requirements for subdivision. Uh, they've been going through that process. Uh, finally, I think this week, uh, the subdivision plot is ready to be approved, but now they have exactly what needs to go into it. In speaking with, uh, Bill Gammel and Mr. Flint today, uh, or Greg Flint today, uh, it looks like these numbers might still, uh, be a little bit high, and so as part of the resolution before you, it gives the opportunity for the mayor and I to make some, uh, changes on that if we need to. And so we will make sure and verify the cost, that they're reasonable, and, uh, that everything's been taken into account. And so that's what you're looking at. Uh, the purchase price is, uh, ten million fifty-seven thousand. Uh, if you take away the subdivision improvements, uh, when this is all said and done, the city would end up with, uh, nine point zero seven million. So any questions on that? Oh, and the excess property. And then there will have two lots that are ready to be, uh, sold as well of, and that's roughly, I think it's eleven point eight five acres. I, uh, so close to twelve, and then, uh, five point five acres. So, and, uh, that property is worth more than this property, uh, by a significant amount, because it's right off the freeway. So. Uh, the other thing is that we wanna make sure the RCM use happens on the property. Uh, underneath the agreement, if, uh, the use is not up and operating within thirty months, the city may buy the property back from Sun Pro. Now, what is in the staff report and, uh, some more discussions with, uh, Sun Pro, uh, since I drafted this, uh, staff report, are a little bit different. And when I say a little bit, uh, what, what is in there is that we can buy the property back for the purchase price, but as Sun Pro looked at it, if they've put like fifteen million into it, it just doesn't seem fair that we could buy it back for nine million after they've purchased it for the ten million and then, or nine million and then put fifteen million into it. And so if they're not up and going by thirty, uh, months, what's in the agreement before you today is that we would have to take that cost into account as well as the purchase rights cost. So we, at that point, we probably, I'm just starting this discussion, 'cause, uh, I wanna make sure that we're understanding that. That's a lot of money. We probably wouldn't purchase it back. However, if they put fifteen million into it, they're probably gonna go forward and make the, the use happen as well. And so that's, uh, kinda the two things as I was preparing today, uh, and looking at it. The other thing is too, is, uh, they have to do some kind of retail use in that zone, and if they've already developed something for RCM, it's really only gonna be good for RCM in that, uh, that, uh, bottom twenty-eight acres. And so, um, we've looked at a number of different options, uh, on this RCM use, um, and we haven't come up with something that is just, works for both parties really, really well. Um, other than, we do have something in there that requires them to do it, um, and if they don't do it, there, we do have an option. Uh, but, uh, one thing we're looking at is, uh, once they start going, I, I don't know why they wouldn't do it as well. So that's something that's before you. If you don't feel comfortable with that, uh, we can continue this for a couple of weeks and give us an opportunity to, to see what we can do with it as well. So.
Where, where did the thirty months come from?
Uh, well, just, it actually came from them. I put a lower amount. I put eighteen months, uh, but they just, you never know what's gonna happen with building and construction, so they asked for the thirty. So. And then the last thing is mutual agreeable landscape plan, and I've already kinda shown you what, uh, the, uh, staff and, uh, the Sun Pro have, have looked at. So any questions on that?
The fifteen acre feet, um, I guess I don't, I'm not a farmer. I don't grow a lot of trees. Uh, is that about how much it would take to keep that many spruces alive, or?
It probably is, and so if you look at acre feet, four acre feet, uh, serves an acre.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and so it basically is, uh, you know, a foot of water for, you know, across an acre, and that's usually what, what landscaping need, needs is four acre feet per acre. And so what you're looking here is fifteen acre feet, and that's something that, uh, their landscape specialist has said, yeah, that, that would do it for what they have there.
Okay.
So you're basically looking at, uh, you know, just under four acres of landscaped area would be served by fifteen acre feet.
All right. Okay, other questions for John? So you're asking for an approval on a tentative development agreement that you're still working on, the last section?
Well, it's up to you. I mean, if you're okay with what I described with, uh, this thirty months, the city can buy it back, but if Sun Pro puts fifteen million into it, that would go back onto the price for us to buy it back. Now, I say fifteen million. It could be two hundred thousand, it could be, uh, ten million, it could be-
I, I understand why we need it. I mean, when we did the, on the other side of the freeway with the boat dealer and the car dealer, Mitsubishi, whatever it was back in the day, there were, we just didn't really put any teeth, and then it was like, whoa, wow, this work. I mean, so it's just lack of performance is, is really what we're after. Um, and, yeah, I'm glad you're at least looking at it, but I don't, I don't know what it looks like. I don't- What do we do if they don't perform?
Well, I, I'm actually fine with it, because I think the intent of what we're trying to do is, well, let's just, we don't want somebody to warehouse a piece of property and then turn around and sell it.
Yeah, and I, I don't-
That's really what we're trying to get away from, and, and we certainly have great trust in them, but having lived through another experience, we thought, oh, this is probably a good idea to put in here, so that everybody at least understands what we're thinking, so they can be thinking what we're thinking, so.
Okay, that's good then. Then I think we're ready to go if, if that's the case.
Okay, thanks, Craig.
And also too, uh, Mr. Greg Flint is here, if you wanna hear from him on any issues.
Is there anything that we can make him uncomfortable with at all, or anything? Is he an attorney?
He is an attorney.
Well, that, that kinda negates everything right there, so I'm not too sure. You're welcome to say something if you'd like to.
Good evening, Mayor and county members. My name's Greg Flint. I was the six-foot-three guy in the photo there, so just for reference.
Oh, I thought that was a magnum.
But I'm the guy standing there facing the other way. I did not jump the fence. We were just taking some pictures there, so. Yeah, I just wanted to be here this evening. Uh, you did answer, ask a question about the rail. I can maybe just give it a quick update on that. Uh, we've been working with Union Pacific to get, um, a dual spur off of that that can hold six cars. Um, that has been approved for their, their, kinda their initial dev con, kinda their like first pass to say, yeah, this looks good, and so we're going to the next step with them, which is engineering on that, so.
Is there any way that you can help us with Union Pacific? Troy? Yeah, yeah.
I, I know they're in Nebraska, so, yeah, that's, uh, that's as helpful as I can be. I've dealt with them on a number of projects in other locations and other properties, so.
I'll let you and Troy talk.
Good luck.
Yeah, good luck.
Yeah, um, yeah, they've been good to work with on this one, but yeah.
I'll bet.
Been doing other ones, and sometimes it's a different story, so.
Yes, for sure.
Well done. That's awesome that you could get it that quick.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Flint?
I'm happy to entertain any other questions or answer anything else, but, yeah, just wanted to be here to, to do that.
Very good. Okay, no other questions?
I'll motion, what is it, are we number six?
Yeah.
Oh.
So I abstain due to conflict of interest.
Okay.
I motion to approve, this is number five, right? No, it's number six. I motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-five dash seventeen, and a development agreement between Springville City and the Sun Pro Corporation for property located approximately seventeen fifty west sixteen hundred south in Springville, historically known as the Sun Tana Raceway property.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Jake?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Logan?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you very much. Okay, oh, yes.
No, I did, there's, yes, sorry. There are a couple of quick things.
I'm not going anywhere. I've got my scooter out there, so we should be all right.
Um, yeah, the, the first issue, and there are a couple of other issues to raise, but we, we may want, uh, uh, an executive session on location based on one of the public comments you got, just, it, it may be helpful to make sure we're all on the same page with, uh, the approach to the annexation of the Money parcel. Um, that's within your annexation declaration boundary, and I met with Mr. Money, and he's aware of that. So it's a little bit of a surprise that they're, he's planning to submit an annexation petition to Spanish Fork. So if you wanna talk about that, we could use a closed session on that.
Can we do a closed session?
Yeah, exactly. We could. It's on the agenda.
I'd like to.
Hold one.
Okay.
Um, and then just two other quick things before we do that perhaps. Um, and I mentioned it quickly, uh, to some of you walking in. I had some back and forth today with, uh, federal government agency, our, uh, IT department and internal services is working on updating our, um, our addressing on the internet to a dot gov, uh, address is required by a new Utah law. Um, in reaching out, we asked for springville.gov, which is available, but the initial reaction back is that they need, uh, a location associated with that, so springvilleut.gov or springvilleutah.gov are both available, um, uh, addresses. Um, if somebody has another idea, we could probably explore that, but I thought just, since we heard it today and we have the council tonight, if you have strong feelings one way or another or direction for us, we'd be happy to have it, or we'll discuss it internally.
Could we do reddevil.gov? We could ask. I, I would do springvilleutah.gov.
So would I, because the UT sometimes gets converted to a VT.
Okay.
So I would prefer Springville, Utah.
Do we have both?
I make a motion.
Oh.
Yeah, I think I heard from everybody.
Can we find either way?
What's that?
Can we have both URL?
Uh, that's an interesting, that is an interesting question and one that I will ask. Um, we, in our internal discussions, I believe we're gonna keep springville.org as well. Um, you know, another big player in the state changed their address, um, to churchofjesuschrist.org, but LDS.org still works. We could do the same thing that if somebody types in-
Yes, yes.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
Yeah, so our base could be springvilleutah.gov, but springville.org or springvilleut would all end up right at that same place. I, I like that idea. Uh, we'll see if that's possible, but, uh, definitely get Utah. Uh, that's a good question. At least right now, um, the, the federal government controls that, and I don't know that they'll give us that one, but we can ask. There are, there are. Springville.gov is available, but we were told today we can't get that. Is that your same understanding? Yeah. Yeah, exactly. This is helpful. This is great. The, the other one, and I don't wanna take too much time, just, we had a discussion internally today. Is Friday update still valuable to you as a council? Are there changes or updates to that that you would like to see, um?
It's valuable to me.
Valuable, valuable, very. You could care less. I got it.
I like pictures.
So.
I'll just call.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I, personally, I like, I like some of the email banter that John sends out. It's very enjoyable.
So John thinks he's the driest of the three of us.
Oh, really?
So that's good for John to hear that you like it. So maybe we'll have John send you a Friday update.
John's got a good vibe.
Yeah.
Okay, I need a, I need a motion then to adjourn to a closed session.
For litigation.
For litigation.
I motion that we go to a closed session for litigation and then end the meeting thereafter.
Second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
A roll call vote.
Dang.
Oh, yes, it is.
Jake?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Logan?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mindy?
Yes.
Thank you.